Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's a big echo chamber in here today. Daylight savings, here we go.
Well, I'm excited to say that we have launched a pilot for our live streaming. So if anybody's actually gotten on the link yet, you'll hopefully see our meeting running live. So on the YouTube Facebook page, if you go to MadisonCT.org on YouTube, is that correct? MadisonTV.org on YouTube, you will see this meeting being livestreamed. So first order on the agenda is approval of the minutes for February 21st, 2020, special meeting, February 24th, 2020, regular meeting, and February 27th, 2020, special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So I would just like to offer a correction to the regular meeting on 24th. Agenda item 6B, which was the open agenda item, the minutes list, me as having moved the issue, I believe it was Al who moved it and seconded by Scott.
I went back and watched the video after you texted me. And you're correct, so I'll make this correction. Okay. Any other changes or amendments? Erin, do you have anything to the minutes?
Um, no, I don't have anything.
Okay. All in favor as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Great, okay. Next thing is first selectwoman's update. And highlighting again that we're livestreaming today and hopefully we'll be a successful test run and we'll start broadcasting the link for all future board of selectmen meetings.
Can you just tell me the link again? I'm trying to get through. You two, MadisonCTTV?
Madison.
TV.org.
TV.org, not CT, but MadisonTV.org.
Okay.
And I sent it in your text.
Yeah, but I'm gonna try to get on my computer because I can't, I can't be on my phone and on.
Oh, right, and watch it at the same.
Erin, there's a link on Facebook too, if you need to find it there.
Yeah, and also if you go to my first selectwoman's page, I posted this morning the link.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next, first selectwoman's update, we talked about the piloting of livestream. Another important issue, obviously, that the community has been very focused on and the news has certainly been focused on is the coronavirus. And I just want to let you know that the town and schools have been monitoring the situation very closely. We've already held several planning sessions with the health department, our emergency management team, as well as the schools. And we'll continue to follow national, state, and local guidelines. And a lot of this is looking really to the governor's office, who will drive a lot of the policy going forward about how the public should deal with the coronavirus. But we have a team in place and we're on top of it. And we will communicate with the public when there's any updates or information that needs to be shared. We held a public information session about summer 2020 beach plans. And that document presentation should be available on the website this week. I don't think it's been posted yet, but that will walk through the staffing, the pricing, answer a lot of questions people have had about the beach pass system, as well as, you know, what kind of services we're offering at the beach this summer. And Scott Erskine later's in the agenda will update us quickly on that as well. And then, just, I've been attending some regional events, including an update on current legislation through the CCM, which is one of our organizations that support municipalities. I went to a really interesting breakfast that, actually, I said it was a typo there, it's not Tent Town, it is Tent Town Transit Breakfast. And learned there are a lot of services that are offered in our region for public transport options. And so I'm actually gonna have them come and do a presentation to this board in a couple of weeks, probably will be more like April, just to talk about some of the different options that Madison is not necessarily tapping into right now that might be a great benefit to the community, particularly the senior community. We had our hearing last week for the Board of Selectmen recommended budget. Two weeks ago, this board passed unanimously passed a budget for $87.5 million. This is going to result in a potential 2.2 percent mill rate increase. The presentation is also gonna be available online. That gives a lot of details about what's driving the budget, what is causing the budget to go up, and just to talk through.
What's driving the budget?
Sorry?
What's working?
Well, that's really funny, there's a delay.
And anyway, so this is one of many steps in the town's budget process. And the Board of Finance is not going to be reviewing it, and the public will have an opportunity to have their say when they vote on May 19th. So please pay attention. And I think you'll find the presentation that was done on the 4th, when it's up on the website, is very informative and will help explain a lot of things about what drives the budget and growth in our budget. And, you know, as I've talked about both at the State of the Town, as well as at this meeting, that there's a number of new factors that are impacting changes in our budget, including new library, which we're very excited to see rolling online and opening up to the public this July. We continue to have challenges with our ambulance service model, and we're working to address those this year, but we need to continue to fund the ambulance so we can provide its services. We had some changes in how we fund our pension that we were required to do, so that required an additional increase in how we save for future pension funding needs. We're also implementing a new operational software this year that is went from an annual cost of $17,000 a year to an annual cost of $100,000 a year. So that obviously drives our operating costs up. And then, obviously, we have a number of anticipated capital needs that we're seeing. And so we're trying to address those through both saving for the future, as well as getting some projects done in town. So more here on the budget, I'm sure, there'll be lots more to talk about. Well, let's go back to, so that's it for my comments. And any liaison reports or selectman comments?
I have several. So first, tonight, there's a women's panel discussion celebrating National Women's History Month at Daniel Hand High School. It's on the bridge, 6:00 PM. There's a viewing of the exhibit celebrating women's suffrage from the Connecticut Women's Hall of Fame. And then there's a 6:30 panel discussion where the speakers, to address the challenges that still face women a century after suffrage. This is a session that was pulled together by a high school senior, I believe, Kealan Verguto.
Yep, I found out attending that.
Yeah, I think Katie's also speaking too.
Yeah, I'll be on the panel, so.
Yeah.
Really interesting evening, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah. And then this weekend, sorry, I'm trying to get all my updates here. This weekend, there was a vibe show entitled "The Connecticut Classic." And there were 2,000 competitors at Daniel Hand High School from six different states, bringing thousands of visitors to downtown Madison. So the word on the street was, we had a fair amount of people shopping in our stores and eating at our restaurants and all that, just as a result of this incredible event. So it sounds like it went off with a pitch, albeit very late on Saturday evening. So I heard rumors, rumors were that they may or may not have gotten home about 2:30 in the morning, so. And then my last update, I just want to read a quick thing from Scott Cochran, if you indulge me. So, "On behalf of Madison Youth and Family Services, we wanted to acknowledge and thank several members of the Madison Board of Selectmen that attended our February 20th State of Madison Youth Community Presentation. It was very meaningful to our staff and our THHS student panelists to have such visible interest and support from members of our town leadership, in addition to members of the Board of Ed and Board of Finance and State Representative Noreen Kokoruta. I am aware that many of you left directly from an evening budget workshop to attend our event. It was surely a very long day for all of you. We appreciate your dedication and efforts to understand the issues and challenges that face our youth and families. Above all, we appreciate you working closely with Madison Youth and Family Services to ensure that we are always meeting the community needs. Sincerely, Scott Cochran, Director of Madison Youth and Family Services." That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Scott. And that was a really good event, I did attend that, although got in a little late, but it was very informative, it's just a parent attending it and learned a lot.
Same.
Erin, do you have any comments?
No, I don't, not today.
Okay, great.
A quick update on our Government Studies Committee. I'm technically not a liaison, but I've been following their minutes. They're off to a very fast start, and with Lauren's help, they've already been interviewing officials from numerous other towns in Connecticut as to the structure of their government and why they made changes and how those changes have worked out. So our Government Studies Commission Committee is planning on keeping to its timeline and giving us a progress report whenever it is we ask them for. So I think they'll be ready to give us an update.
Are they?
May 20th, March 30th, they're coming to give you an update.
They are, okay.
As well as the other AHAC committee, the items.
Oh, perfect.
They'll both be here.
Oh, good. Al, do you happen to know with that committee, are they planning on interviewing all five of us? I know they're interviewing people from other boards, at least that's what I've heard.
My sense is they were planning on interviewing numerous elected public officials.
So it could be randomly selected.
It could be random, it could be all of us.
I know they're doing first selectmen for sure, myself, I think Tom, Phil Moore, and then Al in that capacity. And Thomas Barcatti as well.
Oh, good, oh, wow.
And I'm not sure about the rest of your current sitting board, if you will be asked for an interview. I know that we also were trying to give that committee a little bit of distance from you guys, so that they had, you know, when they came to you with their recommendation, it was an outside objective recommendation.
Yeah, sounds great. Thank you.
So we, the Beach and Rec Matt, but it was really in preparation of the public session that you held last week. The only thing I would add is that we are tracking to have a full complement of lifeguards. I don't think they're all hired, but we've got quite a bit. We've got at least the minimum, and now we're looking to add the last few people, which we expect to have.
That's awesome.
So improving strategy, pay strategy seems to be working.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
Oh, can I ask one question about, Al, can you give an update on the Island Avenue Committee as well, because I think you attended that, right?
I did attend it.
Sorry, not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's much of an update.
Okay.
They've identified all the areas they need to look into, and committees come together very nicely. I think Graham Curtis is doing a fine job this chair. I don't think, Erin, they've accomplished enough yet to give a report.
Okay.
But they will be coming the 23rd, you said, just to come back. And I know there's some questions that they want from this board in terms of just help sort of the issues.
Scope.
Exactly, so, and then we'll address that on the 23rd. Okay, moving on, citizens' comments. Nope, citizens' comments.
Bueller, bueller.
All right, moving on.
Item meeting.
All right, so I think the next item was an executive session more if we needed it on Island Avenue lease negotiations. So I guess the order of business, unless this board feels it needs to go into executive session. Erin, you're good with that, if we don't go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess, what do we do?
Motion move, or do we have to?
Do we move it from the agenda, or we just? No, we just table it for no action. And then go on to your next item. Table it for no, for no action, okay. All right, item is tabled for no action, all right. Next item is discuss and take action to request the Board of Finance to review on March 18th, 2020, of a lease modification and extension agreement between the Town of Madison and Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy as it pertains to the leasing of the Island Avenue School. So we'll talk more, I guess, first of all, do we need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, so, discussion is, although the Board of Finance is not required to review this lease or weigh in or vote on it, I think the precedent that was set last year was, it would be to give them the courtesy of reviewing the lease, because obviously this has an impact on our budget. And so we will be sending to them the lease modification agreement that this board later will talk about here today. So I think the idea is they will have an opportunity, I think their meeting is, it's on their agenda. The 18th. The 18th. And they've been kind of kept abreast of where we are on our negotiations, and they will just have an opportunity to review and discuss if they're meeting. So, all in favor, are we, any more comments on that issue?
No, I just think it's a tremendous opportunity for collaboration with Board of Finance. We should be doing more of this, so this is great.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, all right, moving on to item eight, discuss and take action to approve calling a public hearing on Monday, March 30th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Auditorium at Brown Middle School to hear comment on the lease modification and extension agreement between the Town of Madison and Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy as it pertains to the leasing of the Island Avenue School.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I don't know if we do this and then talk about the lease, or do we do, I guess, the way it's stacked.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, sorry.
So we can, do we want to have the discussion of the lease now, or wait till the next, okay, so, so any discussion on this item eight? We'll have more thorough discussion on item nine, I think, about the lease.
So maybe in this motion, the discussion can be around, it's sort of the mechanism of how this all works, right? The process, yeah.
The process.
It's a lengthy process. So our role, our role as the board, is to bring to the public something that's actionable, something that's been vetted out, and then it's up to the community to approve or not our, what we've put forth. So that's the purpose of this, this hearing, is to solicit input from the public on the document.
Right, so it's an opportunity now that after kind of confidential negotiations were going on, the board came to today to have what we feel is a reasonable lease modification to put forward to the public. And this hearing will allow the public to weigh in on that.
Right, and then we have a period where we have, we can consider those, that input.
Those, right.
And then it goes back to the public for an ultimate vote.
For town meeting vote, so. And this is the process that was followed previously as well for the previous lease, for the current that's in place, so.
And it's the process for all important decisions in the town.
Well, it is. Board of Finance point is something that was added, I think, to the staff.
Like you said, it was a courtesy, right?
Right, right.
It was, we want to evolve Board of Finance and garner their input as well.
And I think this just shows that the town has typically not leased buildings, nor sold buildings. And so this is a new process, I think, for the town and for this board and all boards to wrestle with, because historically, we just haven't had to do this before. So, all right, all in favor of calling a public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, all right. Passes.
Yeah, 3.
All right, number nine, discuss and take action to approve calling a special town meeting on Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, in the Auditorium at Brown Middle School to approve the following resolution. I actually put the resolution up here so people could read it. Resolve that the lease modification and extension agreement granting Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy of Madison a one-year extension of the existing lease of the former Island Avenue School at an annual rent of $400,000 and an option to renew the lease for an additional year with Board of Selectmen approval. Bein hereby is approved, and that the first selectman bein is hereby approved, hereby authorized to execute the same on behalf of the town.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion. I guess just a couple of comments, you know, since taking office four years ago, I made it a priority to put us on a path to figure out what the future of Island Avenue School will be for this community. I also made it a priority to quickly decide whether to renew the lease to our current tenant at a price that would be fair to both the taxpayer and reasonable to the current tenant. A school that has been left somewhat hanging in the wind these past eight months by the town's slow, often cumbersome decision-making process, but that I am learning is how government works. Island was closed in 2018, and the keys were turned over to the town. We've seen with our experience at Academy, at the Academy School, something that has sat vacant and deteriorated over the last 15 years. The town has not been good in making decisions when it comes to closed school buildings. Unlike a host of other towns with vacant schools, we're fortunate that a private school was willing to lease the building last year with no guarantees for future long-term occupancy, and that they were willing to wait while we as a community figure out what we want to happen with this valuable asset. The Island Future Use Committee is now up and running, and we launched that last month. And we look forward to hearing the recommendations on the school. When they have completed their work, this board, along with input from the public, will need to determine next steps. This process will most likely take at least 12 months. Any sale of this property, whether to Oil &amp; Prep, another school, or to a residential developer, will need to go through several boards, multiple public hearings, and eventually end up on a referendum ballot, where the people of this town will have their say on its fate. The town has never successfully sold a property before through this public process. So the process to come up with this lease renewal was a lengthy and thorough one. It involved a lot of research on market rates and other empty schools, which are many throughout this community, or throughout this state, a risk analysis of the maintenance needs of this building, so we understand the risks the town is undertaking as a landlord, over eight executive sessions to negotiate the key terms among our own board, which I would argue is probably a record for the Board of Selectmen, eight executive sessions. I want to personally thank our negotiating team, Erin Duquesne and Al Goldberg, for working through some tough issues. And for all of you on this board, being readily available as needed and fully engaged so we could reach this point today. So I'm very comfortable recommending, and I'm sorry I did write this out, because I'm not very good this hour of the morning winging it, I'm very comfortable recommending to the town that the lease to Oil &amp; Prep be extended one year at a reduced rent of $400,000, with an option to renew for another year if only agreed to by this board. This extension will only be granted if we feel the town is unable to make progress on a long-term solution. We do not need another empty vacant building in this town. So those are my comments, and I probably didn't blink, but, any other people want to discuss this issue or make comments? Any other board members?
Well said. Yeah, I think we spent a lot of time discussing, you know, and we spent a lot of time compromising. And I think that this is, this is now suitable for community input and community action. And I think the important thing to realize is that we need the community to be engaged and come out and tell us how you feel about this. So I think we felt this was the best deal that could be negotiated, and it's now up to the community to tell us what you want.
Erin, any comments?
No, I agree with everything that's just said.
Great, anybody else? All right, all in favor to discuss and take action to approve calling special town meeting, please say aye.
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 All right, great, motion passes. Item number 10, update on the 2020 beach season recommendations. I'm here, Scott Erskine here. And I think what we just wanted to highlight was, we had a public presentation last week that laid out the staffing of the beach and the beach pass system that we envisioned for the summer. And there were, was a lot of discussion on this board about what we charge for our resident passes. The Beach and Rec Commission last month rose the price, increased the price for non-resident visitors, and the question came up as we were reviewing the budget, given the fact that the cost of staffing at the beaches almost doubled since the resident rates were set in 2007. So the rates are 13 years old. The cost of staffing the beaches has doubled, has gone from, on average, $9 an hour to almost $18 an hour now to hire a lifeguard. The thought was, do we increase the resident rates? And I think the decision, the recommendation from the Beach and Rec Commission was not to change the resident rates this year. I think that what we want to do is really hit a reset button this year, get back to where we were prior to last summer's kind of experiment with the passport system, have fully staffed beaches with lifeguards, have rates be the same, and the system work similar to it did in the past, including the sticker system. Going forward, in 2021, we wanted people to be able to purchase their passes online. And I think that some of that might have a cost associated with it and might require a relook at how we structure our resident pass system. And we felt that that's going to take a lot of time in order to determine that and make it the most effective. So I'm in agreement in terms of keeping pass prices the same, and we just wanted to kind of bring that to the public's awareness, that we are thinking about revenue, because I know people like to, you know, the common sense is, if costs go up, you have to accommodate for that and maybe charge more. So we are going to be thinking about that, and that'll be discussion to be had over the next 12 months as we lay out the program for 2021. But for 2020, things will stay the same. Scott, I don't know if you want to add anything to?
I think you covered it.
Stole all your thunder.
The biggest, the biggest thing would be that the board, coming from the Beach Recreation Commission as far as the non-resident rates, you as a board would need to approve those rates in order for us to implement them.
Okay, so what we could do that is, next, the next meeting, right, it needs to be effect, but first, the next meeting, we'll just do a vote, just to kind of check the box. And this board has an opportunity to weigh in now if you feel strongly differently about the recommendation Beach and Rec made about keeping resident rates the same.
Why are you looking at me like that?
I'm looking at you.
Because you know, well, so I do feel.
We all get it.
I do feel very strongly about this, as you know. I guess, given your initial point of the rates are 13 years old, I guess I'm, I feel like we need to start moving in a constructive landing here. I just feel like we, we need to at least start moving the ball towards revenue, and clearly this is going to cost more money. I think my assumption is that the public would be expecting some level of increase, given that we're moving towards a different system. I don't think the public, if they knew that the rates were 13 years old, would have any issue with a $5 increase, a $10 increase, et cetera. I just think we have to start looking at opportunities to generate revenue in this town, and this is, to me, it's a missed opportunity, I think. So I think we, I think we really need to think about this.
I will say that one of the things I think we learned over the experience is that this last summer, is that although revenue is important, people also see this as a community asset. So it's balancing that, right, where we don't feel we're putting a burden on the, on the public to use a community asset. Although I don't disagree, it's common sense, when your costs double, you have to try to recapture some of those costs.
Yeah.
And I think the question is when, and next year, we'll be in a position, I think, with a new pricing structure, probably, that would be more amenable to online sales that would give us that opportunity. There's also going to be a process cost involved that we would want to roll into that price increase. And so I know I didn't want to have to then advocate raising them now and then raising them again.
It's okay, I will. It's okay, I will, so. I just think, I think the incremental services would dictate us thinking about something maybe a little bit differently. We're adding services, we're adding lifeguards, we're adding gate guards. Yeah, that's an incremental cost, I think we should be passing some of that back through to the public. And they would expect it, I think. Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, so, I come at this from a completely different perspective. And my starting point is that we're, we're in the business of providing services, not generating revenue. That is, our role as a municipal government. By definition, the beach pass purchase excludes residents. Those who don't purchase beach passes don't get to use a town asset that they are substantially funding through their taxes. So we have this conversation around beach passes and revenues, but the reality is, the beach passes generate $160,000 a year. In an $85 million budget, or whatever our budget is, it isn't material. It is, it is literally a rounding error in the budget. And I would like to see a day where everyone who pays a tax in Madison, and since this is a parking tax, a car tax seems to be the, you know, a property tax on an automobile seems to be the most logical, they get to use a town asset, right? We don't exclude anybody from Salt Meadow, we don't exclude anybody from Rockland, we don't exclude anybody from any of our other town properties. We spend money on those properties, maintaining them and keeping them safe. Why are we trading the surf club and our wharves any differently? I think if we really felt the desire to recapture that $160,000, we could roll that into the automobile property tax, and quite literally, any, any automobile garage in Madison paying taxes in Madison could, in theory, receive a parking permit. could in theory receive a parking permit.
So are you suggesting that we would raise the car taxes accordingly, or just as is, you get a permit?
I think that's an item for discussion, right?
We would need to vet that, because I think if we may not really...
So I know there are other communities in Madison that do that, I mean, in Connecticut that do that. So I'm guessing there's a way. I don't think we'd be reinventing the wheel. I think it probably provides some logistical hurdles that need to be overcome. And I'm looking at MP as I say that, because she's thinking the law right now. But the idea is access to a community asset. I think it's in keeping with the higher strategic goals that we have for the town and utilizing the resources that we've got, seeing better utilization of the resources we've got. So as we move in the next budget cycle, which starts the day after the referendum, I'm hoping there's room for a conversation like that.
The trick, though, you mentioned the different parks that we don't have gate guards and things like that, though. So they are different in terms of how we restrict access.
So they are different, but we spend money on all of those properties.
Fair point, yep.
And we don't, and we don't charge for access. So unless we want to make the case that there's a threshold of money that we spend and then you have to pay, which I think is problematic. I think it, we begin to overcomplicate this. And to hear Beach and Rec spend 80% to 90% of their time figuring out how they're going to manage the surf club and really all around this paid access, it's a little tough to sit through those meetings. And here, a group of people really trying to do the right thing, right, really trying to make it work, trying to make it fair, listening to all of the exceptions, everything from, "I used to live in town, so I should get something," to my, you know, my Mini or my fifth car or my, you know, whatever it is. There's just, there's a never-ending list of exceptions to the pass rule and how to get one, so.
I'm very sympathetic to the views being expressed here. And I think Peggy, we've reached the right balance point. We're not ready to make any fundamental change prior to April 1st, which is when we have to start selling passes this year. So I think Bruce is setting out a good path for us to get ready for the succeeding year. Because I think it will involve a lot of discussion. This is a highly symbolic issue for the public, we have to be aware of that. And frankly, I think once we restore the public's confidence in the good operation of the surf club this year with our gate guards and lifeguards and moving back to beach passes, I think it'll be much easier to help the public understand and feel confident a year from now when we're ready to implement some fundamental change. So I know how this board struggles to find revenue, but I think at the moment, on this particular item, we're not ready to find more revenue.
I think it'll be a...
I'm going to use a line that I think I've been quoted on in the past, respectfully disagree. Writing?
Erin, Erin, do you have a comment? Can I...
Yeah, well, I kind of agree with everyone's point. But I, and I'm comfortable committing to kind of exploring other options, but as Bruce described. I think, I think we should do that. I think, you know, similar to how we're addressing some of the other things that we're doing in town, by looking to see what other towns are doing and see if perhaps there could be a better way to meet all of our goals. So I think, I'm hopeful doing that as a board committing to exploring that for next year.
Good, and I think the Beach and Rec Commission is also committed to that. We've had a number of discussions in those committee meetings as well about thinking about this over the next six to 12 months. So right now, I think we all agree, we just want to have a comfortable, uncomplicated summer season. Hopefully, the last is on par.
How would that play out? How would we start the process of looking at that, and who would be responsible for that?
Well, typically, it's been the Beach and Rec that has driven, Commission, that has driven that process. And I think that they committed in the last meeting that they would have, they would start exploring those options. And Bruce was at the meeting that I attended, and I think they seem committed. I think also, just in my role as kind of operational head of the town, I would monitor and work with them to make sure that we're kind of looking at all the different ways that we can do this and then create opportunities for public input. So I would think from a timeline standpoint, we'd start looking at options through the summer and then start talking in the fall about what those options could look like and look at publicly.
Would this include looking at other towns, too?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we need to do that. We always should be looking at what other communities are doing, and some communities do things better and other communities, we're a shining star compared to them. So I think identifying all of that and what those options are would be great for community discussion. And I think it's good to do that before we implement some sort of technology that may not fit well with what that ultimate outcome is, right? So, and we have the ability to sell online. We're going to test it a little bit towards the end of the summer, but we're not going to make any kind of major commitment to that system if we choose to move in a different direction. Anybody, any other comments? Okay, so, great, moving on. All right.
I'm sorry, Peggy, Scott, you may want to...
Oh, I'm sorry, and we have MP from Beach and Rec.
You may want to update the public on the process of obtaining a beach pass for the coming year. What are the ways the public will be able to do that?
Basically, we're reverting back to 2018 where people can come in here to the office. They can mail with a self-addressed stamped envelope a request to get a sticker. As well as, last year, we started having the surf club office open. And that will happen again this year. And it'll be going seven days a week, beginning May 4th, from 8:30 to 5:00. So anybody can stop down to the surf club if we're not here to buy their sticker.
Scott, one, will beach passes be available here?
April 1st.
April 1st. And the website already, they have all this information on the website. And then the presentation that was made at the public hearing last week will be available this week as well, so.
We're revising, you know, the application for that.
Yeah, okay, so that'll all be available by April 1st, though, and then all the details. And I will say, the surf club office was added last year. And I think that is going to be a huge benefit to keep open because it will help defray some of the traffic issues, I guess, online that people experience at town campus when they're purchasing them. And it just creates a more easy spot if all you want, trying to do is buy a beach pass.
One of the biggest benefits is that we have the spring sports coming up. So Little League, soccer, lacrosse, all parents are going to be going to the surf club, is what it's like.
Show up and get your beach pass, yeah? I like it.
So, and we'll start promoting that as well?
Because you never have crowds at the end, right, in May, right before the war, ever.
It's very quiet.
Right, yeah, never a line out the door.
All right.
Thank you.
Good? Okay, all right. Number 11, discuss and take action to approve the hiring of Emily Eckenroth to the position of Assessment Tech 2, located within the Assessor's Office. Position is non-exempt. Rate of pay is grade 6, step 5, $29.65 per hour. The position is budgeted, not requiring appropriation of funds. This position vacancy was created by resignation.
Salute, second.
All right. Any questions, discussion? Did you not have Emily here, I'm assuming?
No.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, moving on. Number 12, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Health Department in the amount of $6,240. Pending Board of Finance and Town Meeting approval. Have a motion?
Salute, second.
Okay, all right, discussion. Trent is here, if you'd like to tell us what this special appropriation is for.
Yes, so essentially, we got our, I guess, quarterly bill from Has Waste Central. And there's going to increase throughout the state of Connecticut for household collection and disposal waste. Not to mention, we also had an increased number of participants with our daily collection day that we host in October for household hazardous waste residents to come up and, you know, give us their trash or, you know, liquid waste, hazardous waste, paints. And we've seen an increase in that, and that's where we have increasing costs as well.
Okay, great, and that, I know you mentioned that we added electronics this last year, and that was very popular. And I think it's something that the community really likes, that option. And that also helped drive the cost up a little bit, so. Any questions or...
Will this fall under the jurisdiction of our solid waste disposal commission, which is being reactivated? Some of these policies?
No, I don't think those go straight hand in hand, I wouldn't say so.
Because this is, this is held in Madison, right, the collection?
Right, so actually, this is, so this is 90 Sergeant Drive in New Haven, the Has Waste Central, where our users are able to go there. But we also host our own personal day for our residents, which, you know, we allow, like, even waste antifreeze and oil. And that, you know, can drive the cost up as well.
Could it be in theory, instead of holding it here in town and having it at that facility? Because that's pretty cost-saving, and those are ideas that we could certainly have them look at because partnering with Guilford to have those days, but I think part of the convenience is it's here in Madison.
Yeah, I think you definitely keep the location. As a matter of fact, we only, since 2016, we only did this every other year. And I've done it every year because I've saw, you know, a lot of people requesting, want that service. So I think every year, at the same location, it's a good thing for them.
Trent, do you have to be a Madison resident to...
No, we actually allow Guilford, we actually allow Guilford, brand of residents to come on. But, you know, maybe 21 people from Guilford show up out of 375, so it's well attended. It's at, we hold it at the Town Garage. It used to be at Hammond and asset, but we have it down at Fort Pat.
When will it be held this year, Trent?
We're scheduled for October 5th or 13th, one of those first week or second week of October.
Since we're on the topic, maybe you could just say again the location in New Haven and their hours of operation?
Well, the hours of operation, they have it defined on the website, you know, they change it seasonally. But that's 90 Sergeant Drive in New Haven, that's where everybody's allowed to go and drop off. You know, when we don't have that yearly one in October, so everybody's able to go there. And then the one in October is on Fort Pat Road, the Town Garage. And we'll give out a lot of, a head, advance notice to residents and everybody else.
Okay, so what website can residents go to to look for?
That's going to be the, I think it's believed the Connecticut Regional Water Authority. And you would go to the Has Waste, because they're like streamlined with that, Connecticut Water Authority. And you'll see Has Waste Central as an icon there to select from.
I wonder if we could, could we put something like that out on the town website?
In terms of the...
Yeah, just recommend where to go and the hours.
I have information on the health page for household hazardous waste.
Yeah, okay.
So they're able to find it, just go into the Health Department.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe we do it just to blast, just to say, hey, go here, just so you know, this is available.
I'm sure people have a lot of questions about it, so.
No, it's an important issue, and the most important thing is that people don't bundle it in their personal trash. So that's why I think we need to encourage that people use the appropriate ways to dispose substances. As much as we can broadcast that, the better. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Erin, you're good?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Trent. 13, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request in the amount of $102,080 to fund health and transportation services for Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy pending Board of Finance and Town Meeting approval.
So before you motion, if I can ask for a clarification to your motion, that you approve a special appropriation request in the amount of $21,080 for health services and a special appropriation request in the amount of $81,000 for transportation services.
Just split them out.
So it's the same amount, but we have to do two different forms because it's from two different accounts.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
All right. All right, discussion. So basically, the town is required by the state to provide bus transportation and nursing services to any private school in Madison. We do this every year through the normal budgeting process for other private schools in town. Because of the situation at Allon Prep and the fact that there was, during the budget process last year, some ambiguity and unclarity about what the cost would be and whether or not there was going to be a lease and all kinds of things, it wasn't actually budgeted for. But neither was the revenue, so people can understand that there's revenue to offset these costs. So we have to do this year a special appropriation. But I think the recommendation would be, you know, if the lease extension agreement is approved at town meeting, it should be included, the net, in the budget for 2021. Normally, if a school's there, we just budget for it as we always have to. So that explains what this is. And any more discussion or questions?
So this is for the current year?
This is for the current year, correct. Because I guess last year, they opted not to include it in the budget.
They didn't have to at least sign at that point.
Yeah, they didn't have to at least sign what the budget was voted on. So we're a little ahead of the ball this year, so we can make the adjustments in this year's budget if the Board of Finance chooses to do so. Any more questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. 14, discuss and take action to add to the call of the March 23rd, 2020 special town meeting as follows.
So I have to adjust this as well?
Right.
So we go, well, not split. We go to town meeting for anything that is in aggregate over $50,000. So you're actually only going to go to town meeting on that second special appropriation request for $81,000 for transportation services, not the whole amount.
Discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request in the amount of $81,000 to fund health and transportation services for Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy pending Board of Finance.
Just transportation.
Transportation, sorry. Or fund transportation services to Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved, second.
Okay, and this is just following on what we just talked about. Any more questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
15, discuss and take action to approve a request from the EC Scranton Memorial Library to release funds set aside by the town of Madison for the Scranton Library's additional budget needs for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Salute, second.
Okay, discussion. So basically, my understanding of this is that in last year, the, last year's budget, this amount of money, which is not in the request...
$150,000.
$150,000.
Should we amend the motion?
It's on, yeah, it's not on the agenda, but it's...
Oh, it's on the actual motion, I'm sorry, I'm reading the agenda.
Let's amend the motion.
Okay.
I'll amend the motion to include $150,000.
You have a second, second, Pat?
Second.
Okay. And basically, from what I understand, this is already approved in last year's budget. There was just an additional step that the Board of Finance had requested that in order for the funds to be released to the library, that they would need to come to the Board of Selectment and then the Board of Finance to get the funds released. So this is not an additional request. This is only providing them the funds that they have already been allocated through the budget, last year's budget.
So just a process step, it sounds like?
It's a process step, so does that, any questions on that, or does anybody understand that? I mean...
Oh, it's just, these are funds that we've been talking about for the last several years that we have owed them a return on, so.
Right. All right, Erin, any questions on that?
Nope.
All three of our library members are here, too. So maybe a slam dunk.
Just in case you have questions.
Yeah, okay, so this is just the required to go through the stuff to get the funds released, so. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, passes. Go collect your checks, Stacy's right over here.
No one has to go through the Board of Finance first.
Oh, that's right. Appointments, resignations, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Virginia Raff from the Salt Meadow Park Advisory Committee.
So moved with gratitude.
Second.
Yes, thanks to Virginia. She's been a stalwart in serving on many committees in town, and we're sorry to see her go.
Yeah, yeah.
She was one of the first when this committee was first seated, I think, after the town purchased the property. So thank you for your service. All in favor of accepting the resignation?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, number 17, tax abatements.
This is the new one. So I will move that we release $10,000... So I will move that we release $10,572.51 for tax abatements. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Citizen comments? No, yes?
Can I, so, do I want to say...
You have to do your name and your address.
Amy Stefanski, 1046 Boston Post Road in Madison. In, I know tonight you have a women's event at high school, but we in Madison are pretty lucky. I made a list of all the women in leadership in Madison, starting with our first select woman, our finance director. We've got the Chair of the Board of Ed, Chair of the Board of Finance, our State Senator, our State Rep, Head of the Library, Chairs of the DTC and RTC, Chamber of Commerce. So, pretty neat in Madison, we have a lot of women here to be proud of. So I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, great point, thank you.
Very important point.
We are lucky.
We are lucky, and it's great to have so many different people participate, volunteers, so. Any other citizens' comments? No? All right, I think, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Aaron, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for joining us.
You, too.